Good evening and welcome to the September 12th, 2024 School Committee Meeting. At this time, I'll call to order and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the United States, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Next up is introduction of members, and I'll start from the left.
Tenovio Millville.
Carrie Goddett Blackstone.
Erin Binaco Millville.
Matt Catalano Millville.
Chuck Dunton Blackstone.
Tara Larkin Millville.
Dan Keith Blackstone.
Joe Spagna, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pill Gallerani, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
And Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Which will roll us right into our student representative.
Yes, so I have a lot of sports updates to give today, so fall sports have begun at BMR and middle school because we do combine sports for most sports. We have a JV in varsity with middle schoolers being on JV a lot of the time. Football has lost its season opener to Bellingham and has a bye this week. Volleyball is now one and three and plays Southbridge tomorrow. Boys soccer had their first game yesterday and won three to one. Girls soccer is one and three and plays David Proudie tomorrow. Field hockey is zero and three and plays Nipmuck tomorrow. And we also have our cross-country and cheerleading teams that have started up this year. We also have a marching band. Their show's theme this year is Space Oddity, and they have their home show on the 21st. So high school students have been adapting to a new schedule this year with the implementation of Charger Time, which is a 30-minute break in the day where students will go to their advisories, get to know the kids in their advisory better and their advisors. And we are now working on vision boards incorporating our dreams and aspirations. And we have just finished illuminating letters, so we'll take the first letter of our names, and there's some little circles, and we can fill it in with icons and pictures that represent things about us. So you can put like a volleyball if you play volleyball, something like that, and color it in. And those are now displayed up in the hallway. And I personally like the Charger Time 30-minute break because it gives you a chance to really sit back and like relax, because high school can be hectic and you get stressed out. So Charger Time is a great time, just have a break in the day. Our student council is preparing for Homecoming Week, or Homecoming, which is starting on October 3rd. October 3rd will be our Homecoming Dance, and we have a theme, but it's to be determined. And Friday at 10:04, we have boys JV soccer at 3:30. We have JV and varsity volleyball, varsity playing at 4:30. And we have football with a band performance at their halftime show at 7:00 PM. On Saturday at 10:05, we have field hockey playing at 11:00 AM and girls soccer at 1:00. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Consent Agenda A, Consideration of Warrants. Looking for a motion to accept the warrants, approve the warrants.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Ted.
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of the warrant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And to accept the minutes from August 19th, 2024.
So moved.
It's August.
It is August, that's right. Was that you, Erin?
Yeah.
Motion made by Erin.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Public forum, does anybody wish to speak, address the school committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to school committee agenda. Student recognition from the Frederick Hartnett Middle School. Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Jill, I'm actually going to have you introduce the...
Absolutely. So we always have student representatives from the high school. So when we're talking next year, our students across the district are leaders in our schools. They take on leadership roles, they're part of our ILTs. So what we'd like to highlight for you at every committee meeting is not only what's happening at our high school, what's happening within our schools. So we invited three of our middle schoolers from our new reorganization middle school. We have Zachary, Ashley, and Cadence. I had the pleasure of meeting with them next week and hearing about their start to the school year, and I'm excited for you to be able to hear from them tonight. So do you want to come on up to the table? And Mrs. Remka, just so you know, we've already talked about this, is here for support only. This is all about them.
They're the lead cast tonight.
They are, absolutely. So did one of you want to go first?
I'll start.
Why don't you tell us what grade you're in, your name and what grade you're in?
I'm in seventh grade, and my name is Ashley Shama. So to start off, one thing that I've noticed throughout the beginning of the school year was that having the younger students in our school gives us the opportunity to become role models for them, and so seventh grade can become leaders so the younger students can look up to us. Another observation that I have seen was that having the old, our old teachers inside of our school gives us the opportunity to help them get adjusted to the school and classrooms and just overall give them a warm welcome. And we, and this also through the year, we hope can become a community of learning and help us feel more connected. To add on to what Ashley just shared, it's great to have our former principal, Ms. Remka, back in our school. It's nice because we all know her expectations and how she operates things smoothly. She knows all of us and all of her names and is always present everywhere we go. We are also really excited for leadership opportunities such as ILT and student ambassadors. Overall, this change is very positive for the Frederick Hartnett Middle School. Thank you.
And Cadence, you're in seventh grade, correct?
Yes.
I'm Zachary Consigli, and I'm in fourth grade. And what I like about the middle school is it's a bigger building than last year, and there's actually a band room that you don't, and you don't have to go like in a lunchroom. And there's more options for, from the cafeteria, and you get to buy snacks. And there's lockers, and I really like the lockers because if you're feeling upset, you can take a little walk to your locker and like get like something that you need for school and more recess space. There's no playground because basically at the JFK, there was no people that liked to play on the playground. They basically just played soccer and poison ball and basketball. There's bigger students because, so they can like role model what, like what's the expectations and we can have a good school year. That's it.
Nice job, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. And I did, like I said, had an opportunity to meet with them last week, and we really had a great conversation. I heard about the lunch choices and recess and all the things we're looking forward to this, this school year.
So overall, the new configuration, like the grades in the school and everything, is working okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, perfect. Very good. Nice work, thanks for your leadership.
Thank you very much. And next on the agenda, Blackstone, Parks and Rec, because I don't see anybody here.
No, they asked to be on the agenda, but they're not here.
I will pass over for now.
Sure.
All right, so an update on the selection of the owner's project manager and next steps.
Yeah. Tara, is that...
Yes, please.
So we have some great news to share with the school committee and our school community this evening. Actually, on, at your seat this evening, we had, in addition to the packet that is the presentation that's in your packet this evening from Colliers, who was the recommended owner's project manager for the feasibility study for the high school. We had a meeting with the Mass School Building Authority on Monday to discuss our rationale and our process and why we move forward in recommending Colliers as our owner's project manager for the feasibility study. They had shared, MSBA had shared with us in the meeting that they would not be taking action on the 12th, but, you know, appreciated our time and our feedback and our insight. Just this morning, we received our letter from MSBA saying they have approved our selection. So that's great. And it's also really important as far as the timeline of this project is concerned because our goal is to submit our request for services for a designer, which essentially is the architecture firm, on September 25th. We are, we continue to push the boundaries with MSBA and with Colliers around our urgency. We know that we need to do something quite significant at the high school, and we have children in those seats and teachers in those classrooms every day, and we need to move this process along. Certainly not compromising the quality, but making sure that we're holding everybody to task to get the work done in a timely fashion. So with the approval from MSBA, we have reviewed the draft request for services, have already given feedback to Colliers, we did that earlier in the week on that proposal, and we will have it in front of the school building committee on Monday, September 29th for their approval. And we will be posting it for our future designer on Wednesday, September 25th. So all systems are go, which is great news.
Excellent.
So in your packet, you have the presentation that Colliers had put together with our feedback that was used with the Mass School Building Authority. It's also the presentation that they shared with our school building committee. We had a meeting on Monday evening so that they could, you know, kind of get to know one another and get a sense of what Colliers is going to bring to the work. And then in front of, as I mentioned earlier, in front of your, your seat this evening, you had the letter from MSBA approving our selection. Did I miss anything?
No, I think that was it. Thank you.
Any question? Oh, that was good. I respect your views, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, really, it's really great. We didn't know they were going to turn that around so fast. And as a matter of fact, when Colliers had submitted to MSBA our draft request for services for the designer, they didn't even know yet that they had been approved. So it was interesting, they kind of crossed, crossed paths, so to speak. So we are in very good shape, and I'm really pleased that both the Mass School Building Authority and Colliers is feeling the same urgency that we're feeling to move this project forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is to approve Unit A Grade Reconfiguration MOA. Back to you.
Okay, yeah, so in your packet this evening, and I know the committee is, is very aware, we worked through the spring with the Unit A Bargaining Unit to create a memorandum of agreement that just outlines the contractual changes that we needed to make in order to move forward with the grade reconfiguration. Most of it is the school times, is the majority of it, and just some small changes that resulted in, you know, moving the eighth grade to the high school and what that meant for team leader stipend and that kind of thing. There are no additional budget expenses with this. It's really just outlining the language that we needed to change to mirror what we were doing. The, the Unit A Bargaining Team was great. They did a really great job partnering with us to get this done, and the educators ratified it at our first, our second day back as a staff in August. So we're pleased to have this in front of the school committee this evening for a review and hopefully approval.
Any major, any...
What, changes or things? It's, it's really just moving the grade spans and making them correct, changing at the middle school, like that team leader language, the start times, the duty times. It's, it's really just what we're doing.
And things that are currently happening now.
Yeah, they're already happening, frankly. We had to because we had to open the school year.
Right. And this was, there wasn't really an issue with this. This was only because the summer we were off.
Yep.
Yeah, so this was not a difficult...
No, it passed through the Unit A Association without any issues.
So I'll make a motion to approve the MOA for Unit A as presented.
Motion made by Erin.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And next would be approve 24 through 27 Unit C contracts. And I'll pass that back to you.
Yes, thank you. Again, as the school committee is aware, we had put in place last school year a negotiating team on behalf of the school committee and the Unit C Bargaining Unit Association also had a negotiating team. Again, for those that might be tuning in at home, Unit C is our instructional assistants, what we used to refer to as paraprofessionals and now instructional assistants, cafeteria staff, custodial staff, administrative assistants. It's really kind of the, the support, kind of the backbone of all the different departments throughout the school system. We had a really great team that negotiated for months, frankly, to put together what I think is a very fair successor contract. And the Unit C Association also felt it was very fair. The majority, the overwhelming majority voted in favor of the contract, and it was ratified on Tuesday. So that went through without any, without any issues. There were some language changes that are highlighted throughout the document in red, so you can see. One of the things that is important, we did change the paraprofessional title to instructional assistant, and we proposed that because that's what they're doing. They're assisting in the teaching of learning. It better reflects their work. It also signifies the level of professionalism that we require in that position. A paraprofessional means with a professional. These individuals are professionals, so we felt it would be very important to change that title. So we were able to do so. There are also the financial agreement over the three years of the contract. Those are outlined in the salary grids, and the adjusted longevity rates for the 12-month employees are also outlined in the longevity section of the contract. So I think overall, we got a really good successor contract that will be in place for the next three years.
Any other follow-up questions, Mr. Superintendent? I'll entertain a motion to accept the 24 through 27 Unit C contracts as written.
I move to accept the 2024-2027 Unit C contract as written.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Seconded by Matt and Carrie. Any further discussion?
Can I add one thing?
Sure thing.
Just so I don't forget to mention it. So our public is aware, every single one of our employees is now making an OPEB contribution.
Excellent.
So Unit A was done in their last round of negotiations. All of the administrators and non-union contract started when Unit A did, and Unit C approved their contribution as well. So there is not an employee in the system that is not contributing to OPEB at this point.
I will take great pleasure in relaying that to Mr. Watson.
We've come a long way.
Yes. Is a motion and second on the floor? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. We have a few things to discuss this evening. The first, I'm actually going to be discussing items A and B. I was going to have Mary Colenino, our lead coach here, but she's actually at Millville Elementary School tonight, working with Mrs. Schaefer around the same information, frankly, just sharing some of the changes in the assessment system and sharing, sharing some of the changes in the report cards. Those aren't too significant, but still wanting to make sure that parents have the most up-to-date information. But also working with our English Language Learner families. There was a pre-meeting with our ELL families at 5:30, and shortly Jill will review all of our ELL numbers, English Language Learner numbers, but wanting to make sure that we're being inclusive and everybody has all the information they need. Mary is there this evening and not here. So I'm going to take a few minutes and walk through the very good work done by the Assessment Committee last year that landed us to where we are this evening. The school committee is very much aware that this has been a concern of ours for, for a while now, as far as our internal assessment system, and particularly what I mean is our STAR test, because over time, we've seen a pretty significant discrepancy in terms of where the kids were landing with STAR versus where they were landing with MCAS, and having a lot of concerns that we were getting false positives in some places and frankly, false negatives in other places. And so with that information at the forefront, the Assessment Committee, under Mary's guidance, it really took some time to create this idea of, you know, kind of a vision for this work. Established a goal for the committee, which was really to create a more authentic and meaningful assessment system, one that mattered more to the kids, it mattered more to the teachers, it gave parents better information, that we would, you know, that we would shift from only standardized testing to an assessment system that would align better with what's happening in the classroom. And we're going to talk a little bit about what that is in some of those more real learning applications and experiences for kids. And again, the importance of this is like, we need the right information, and I'm certainly not implying that STAR is the wrong information, but the alignment just wasn't there in terms of how the kids were doing at the end of the day with MCAS, which is another assessment measure that we use. And so with those kind of guiding principles, and I just kind of touched on this a little bit, you know, they, they came up with a structure that I think makes a lot of sense based on this idea of this inconsistent alignment with student performance. Something else that was really important, we heard from some of our student leaders here tonight, but when we had our student ILT meetings at the end of the year, they were really honest, district-wide. And, you know, you would kind of expect kids to say this sort of, but, you know, basically they were like, we are testing too much. Like, you guys got to help us with this. We need to find a better way of doing this. And so we did, or at least we think we did. We hope, we hope that's the case. So some of our goals was to do less testing, less frequent testing, but giving and getting better data. There are going to be some challenges with this that we'll talk about in a minute, but this idea of trying to find these more authentic, and by authentic, we just mean it's work the kids are doing. It's not like, here, do this work, and then when you're done, do this test. It was more of like, how do we create a system that actually allows us to use more authentic work that the kids are already producing? It sounds very simple on the surface, because the kids are doing work all the time, but there are actually significant challenges with it when it comes to alignment, when it comes to data collection, monitoring, implementing our RTI model. So we'll, we'll talk about that, because that's actually in some of our next steps. So here's what we did. We came up with more of a hybrid approach. So we're not necessarily throwing the baby out with the bathwater, or whatever that expression is, but we are hanging on to our STAR assessment for English only, but we're going to be doing it less. We're going to be doing it less. And for mathematics, we are going to be using the programs that we've all, the school committee has supported, that we have purchased. We're going to be using the assessments that are included there. The kids are taking them anyway. So we're, we're utilizing that structure, but there's challenges to that because we've now have to find a method for collecting all of that information, whereas with STAR, it collected it for you. You could run a report as a classroom teacher for your, you know, fifth grade math class, and within seconds have all of the data that you need regarding skills, concepts, standards, who's mastering what, who needs to be in what group. I mean, it was really effortless, frankly, that the system did so much. So now we're creating that system using our core programs for mathematics. So on Slide 5, it really just outlines that, that we're using our core assessments for Intermath. The K to 8 structure is a little bit different from the high school structure. The Intermath program, I'm sure everybody recalls, we actually aligned our K to 8 mathematics program to be one program. So it's Intermath, and every grade level is using the same grades K to 8. Well, embedded in that program is essentially a diagnostic. So there's a diagnostic test that the kids take at the beginning of the year to assess all of the grade level standards and skills. So we are going to simply use that same structure, that test with the kids throughout the year. Now, it's, it's different. When we use STAR, STAR is an adaptable test. What that means, just a reminder for our families at home that may not remember, if I'm a fourth grader and I'm taking the fourth grade test, the more questions I get correct, it scaffolds up and it gives me harder questions. So I could end up finishing the grade four math test at a sixth or seventh grade math level. There's great information there. There's really good information there. But what, and I think this is why we're getting a little bit of a false positive in some cases, what this structure is going to do is going to take the fourth grade standards and it's going to test you on those standards all year. So the idea is we will show progress towards mastery all year long on the standards that the kids are supposed to be mastering in fourth grade. So there are some nuances there that will feel a little bit different for our students. So that's a little bit about that structure. At the high school level, we're doing something a little bit different. SAS is our core program, and so we are going to be doing unit pre-tests and post-tests. This is an important piece to add because what we want to do before each unit is collect essentially a bank of information from the kids, like tell us what you already know about this topic in geometry. So the kids will do that, right? Now, you might have a pre-test where the kids show 40% mastery, and that's okay, that's really good information. By the post-test, we hope we have at least 80% mastery. So the teachers are going to be able to measure a significant, we hope, significant amount of growth between the unit pre-test and post-test. Those are the real assessments that kids are going to use anyways. So we are using that piece. The second piece we are putting in place is essentially quarterly assessments. So we're going to take all the standards and skills that the kids have been focusing on throughout the quarter, and we'll give them essentially a quarterly exam. So we'll be able to see how the kids are progressing on those standards and skills over the series of each quarter. Again, one of the challenges we're going to have with this is we, we have to create the structure that's going to allow us to organize this data and make meaning of it. So do our parents at home that receive like the STAR reports, they'll still get that for ELA in reading, but they're not going to get that for math. So this is going to speak to, really speak to the importance, particularly in grade six through, six through 10, to check Aspen frequently, because that's where a lot of that data is going to show up. However, internally, we are going to be creating a structure that will allow us to break down those assessments by standard skill and concept. What our student rep didn't share about Charger Time, that I know Mrs. Fowles would want me to share about Charger Time, is it not a break in the day? This data is going to be collected and organized, and that period is going to be used as an RTI block for kids who need that. Clearly, they don't know that yet, but it's coming.
I think they're calling it like callback time as opposed to RTI.
Yeah, a different kind of...
Call the kid back in for whatever skills they need.
Now, what the high school has done is they've, they're using a different, just to allay any concerns at home, and I know Mrs. Fowles will speak to this when she's before the committee in October at our meeting on the 10th, but we have actually purchased a software program where all of the students are essentially loaded in, all of the teachers are loaded in, and all of the kids are accountable to a teacher through a particular structure. So if I need to see Ms. Goddett for, you know, for geometry support, I'm going to be loaded into that system for geometry Monday through Friday for two weeks. So there is actually a significant amount of structure to this model. It is not at all designed to be, you know, a break per se. That being said, they, the staff are going to offer different opportunities for students who may not need RTI during that time. So some of the different clubs that we're looking to expand, we're going to try piloting some of these during that 30-minute block. So it's possible that if you don't need to be in RTI and you're interested in, you know, doing a speech or debate club, that you may have an opportunity to sign up for that. So we're trying to get a bunch of bites of the apple, if that makes sense, with that structure. I only mention that here because this is one of the challenges, is organizing that breadth and depth of data on a regular basis, but we have a plan that we are moving forward with to do that. In addition to that, we are adding a open response... But we have a plan that we are moving forward with to do that. In addition to that, we are adding a open response-type question to all of these assessments. So I know the committee has heard us talk a lot about critical thinking, it's one of our five Cs. And so we are embedding within these assessments an open response question. Now, I have to share, I was visiting the English department, which we'll talk about ELA in a minute, at the high school yesterday, and was really impressed by what the students were working on. And I saw an 8th grade, a 9th grade, a 10th grade, 11th grade, and a 12th grade class. All classes from Grade 8 English to, you know, the senior-level literacy courses were focused on this kind of open response-style question, but you could see really tight alignment across the literacy department, as far as how the teachers are setting up the response that they're looking for the kids to be able to do, but also the types of questions were really, really good. They were definitely higher level, as far as, we call it, the depth of knowledge wheel, the DOK wheel, you might have heard of that. Or if you've been at the high school, Ms. Fowles around the holidays puts DOK wreaths on everybody's door, just all the different, like, levels of questions that we want the kids to be able to answer. And you could see in every single, and I was in every five, I was in each, you know, the five teachers' classrooms in the English department, they were all focused on really challenging literature-based questions, where kids were analyzing, comparing different pieces of text. One was a British, a British literature course. So, you know, across the spectrum, the kids were doing some really good work. Now, there's still quarter turns and things that need to happen. We're never done. We're certainly not celebrating, you know, or declaring victory on anything, but it was really good to see the level of work the kids were doing, you know, in Week 2 of the school year. And this, it shows up here, because through this open response style, the more we are giving our students the types of questions and the types of thinking we want them to do, the more they're just going to do it. It's just like building a muscle. So we're going to be embedding this in the K-10 math open response, along with the assessments. Similarly, with our reading, we're going to be doing the same. So with, with literacy, grades K and 1, we're using the STAR early literacy for our reading assessment, we were using that before. Kindergarten students will test in the middle and end of year. That's important, because the kids are just, I mean, if you're in our kindergarten classrooms, you know, they're, they're learning how to do school. And for some of our kids, it's the first time they've been there. I should mention that Mrs. Schaefer is working with her team now to identify the students that have not had pre-K experience, and working with staff, and eventually families, when we get to this point, to actually extend the day for those kids. We have to close those gaps now. We have kindergartners who are reading, who are writing, who know math, they can count up to their double digits, and we have children in kindergarten who have never been in a classroom, that don't know their letters from their numbers. So you talk about, you know, equity, and you talk about gaps, it starts literally in kindergarten and before that, frankly. So we are coming up with a plan for our brand-new K class to extend the day, and what works out great is that for MES, they start late. So, you know, you could, you could run a before-school program from 8 to 9 for a small group of kids. Kids are fresher in the morning anyhow. So we are going to be waiting on our kindergarten students and assess at the middle and end. 1st grade, we'll do the beginning, middle, and end, and then what we're going to be doing for grades 2 through 10, we're going to use STAR, but we're going to do it different. We're going to do a September assessment, and then we're going to do March. We have an EOI test, we have AMCASTs for grades 3 and up. So that was our effort to try to work with our students and hear them, you know, and say, like, "Can you help, like, scale this back a little bit?" So that when they're done with the MCAS, they're done with the formal testing. They're not done with learning, but they're done with the formal testing. So we're trying to kind of strike that balance for, for everybody. We will also be, as I mentioned, including the writing assessment and writing samples to go along with this. Now, again, the good news with the writing piece is it's something the kids are already doing. So we're just going to connect it to that assignment. It's not going to be another assignment. So, again, hopefully the students will feel like this is just part of what they're doing. It feels more authentic.
May I ask a question? The grades that don't have MCAS, is there going to be something else for them, or?
Do you mean for...
Well, up to 3rd grade, and then...
So the...
The end of year.
Yes, so for the little, the younger students, they will, with the exception of Grade 2, K and 1 will have their end-of-year assessment.
Okay.
So Grade 2, we don't have that in place for them yet. We just have the September and March, and they don't take MCAS.
The 9th grade, right?
The 9th grade, yep. No, no, that was a, that was a great question. And then, next steps, obviously, we need to speak with families, make sure, you know, everybody is understanding the shifts, finalize the reporting and monitoring system, that's, I mentioned that a few times. That's going, that's going to be a challenge, but it's, it's something we can do. And then, of course, implement, provide ongoing support for teachers, monitoring and adjust, you know, based on any feedback that we get. And then, the goal is to get us off of STAR altogether for the next year, and actually have our reading assessments, like, homegrown reading assessments in place. We didn't want to do them both at the same time, because of that, that collection, data collection and monitoring piece. This is not easy work. I know on the surface, it might, you know, particularly our families at home, it might sound like it, but there's a lot that goes into this. This was the committee that worked all of last year on putting together the structure. I'm sure you recognize a lot of names. We feel very confident with the individuals at the table that helped us put this model together, that we will be able to execute on the next steps with this. Positively optimistic. Erin, thank you very much for that question.
I, I mean, I like, I think less is more, too. And kudos to the kids for pointing it out to us, you know? They probably feel like, "Why am I taking another test?"
Any other follow-up questions for the superintendent? All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Great.
Thank everyone for all their hard work on that.
Awesome, thank you. Yes, so the next is our elementary report card revisions. And again, Mary Colonino, our lead coach, would have been here with Mrs. Schaefer, because the two of them actually co-led this work. But they are doing the real work with our parents tonight, and I am sure they have a packed house down there. I would be absolutely sure of it. So in, in your packet tonight, I have the pleasure of just walking through briefly the changes to the elementary report card. These were a long time coming, and were really important to get in place, so that our, again, our families have the most up-to-date and accurate information on what is being taught as far as the standards in our core subject areas, English, math, science, social studies, at each one of the grade levels, and what is the sequence in terms of, like, the order in which these things are taught. So in your packet, and I won't walk through every single change, but you will see each of the report card changes in a spreadsheet model. You'll see that their content is listed, the subheading, which is essentially just the social-emotional learning behaviors, reading, writing, language, et cetera, are listed. You'll actually see the notes that the report card committee came up with. And again, this committee was led by Mary Colonino and Christina Schaefer, but is comprised of teachers at all of our grade levels. So again, this is one of those processes that we put in place to hear directly from our staff doing the work, and reflects very accurately the scope and sequence of all of our new instructional programs. So now that we've gone through a full curriculum revision in all of our core areas, now we have a report card that actually reflects that accurately, which is really great. So you will see all of the changes, again, in the spreadsheet underneath the old language, and if there is new language replacing that, you will see in the notes section, language like, you know, "Change description of skill," or "Added this language," or "No changes were needed." It's super clear exactly what was done on each one of the standards, so that you can get a play-by-play description. So I don't want to walk through every single thing, because there's a, there's a lot of information here for each. But we'd be happy to answer any questions, or bring any questions back to Mrs. Schaefer or Mrs. Colonino.
I would just love to see the report card when they have it.
Yes.
That would be, I would like to see, is it still 1 through 4? Is it, is it, like...
K through 5.
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the rating, yes.
The rating?
Yeah.
I feel like that's the part that's good, that does get confusing to the, maybe to the layperson that doesn't know that, like, this is listing your curriculum, not the subject, right?
Right.
So...
We tried to do that for tonight. We tried to bring, actually, in your packet, have a report card for each, and then highlight the changes on the report card. We can't do that yet, only, but we'll be able to, only because we run them through Aspen, and it's like a techie geeky thing, but you can't run the report without any data. So we actually have to have grades in there.
A fake.
To, yeah, like, to run the reports.
So is it, and it is like a numeric system?
I believe so, yes. I'll get clarity on that.
It used to be like 1 through 5, and then we cut it down.
I can't remember when they were here, if they said it was going to be grades.
I think it's going to be 3.
But I don't see how that's...
Yeah.
What, what did you say?
I think it's a number rating.
It's a number rating, but I think they're low on it.
I don't remember what the number scale was.
1 through 3, 1 through 3.
I'll definitely find out, though.
I think so.
Still have to refer to the key.
Yeah, there'll be a key on it, I'm sure. But I, yeah...
What makes sense is that the yellow is obviously the changes, but then there's an orange as well. What does the orange signify?
Let me tell you. I have it here, if you don't mind.
A bad printer, oh, no, there it is. Maybe it's new.
Give me one second. About here, I had a little key I was looking for. Let's see, the note was, "Keep the same, however, removed this comment from all other sections." So it looks like perhaps the learning behaviors were listed in all the sections, so they maybe left it here, but removed it from the other areas in the report card, but I'll find that out for sure. So the numeric system and the orange coding.
Then it looks like they removed works independently? Like, what's the, is that being assessed in a different way, or is that just removed as far as the assessment overall?
Can you point me in the direction, Madam?
Same, same page, where you can find the first orange block. It's a straight line through works independently, says delete.
Yeah, I think it's just because they removed it from, I think they removed that from the other sections, but left it in...
So we're still assessing their ability to work independently?
Independent working levels, yes, I would believe so. I can't imagine you would not be doing that. But again, I'm happy to make sure that, I'll, I'll put all this in the update for tomorrow.
The "works independently" is crossed off, because if you go over to the new language column, it kind of, like, works quietly without distracting others. Stays on task to complete work in a timely manner. They're adding that language in?
All right.
Maybe.
Yeah, I'm happy to find out. So numeric system, the coding for the orange, the working independently, were there any other areas that folks want some clarity around? Happy to do that.
We'll get an update on that.
Yes, I can send it tomorrow.
Any other questions on that? All right, we'll move on to the 24-25 enrollment update.
Yes, as of just today, our enrollment is at 1,508 students. And one of the things I just want to bring to everyone's attention is our 2nd grade classes, which we knew were high. We're just keeping a close eye on them. Right now, they're rated around 25. We have four sections, so if there is a need to bring back or to add an FTE to Grade 2, we'll definitely bring that before the committee. But just to make sure it's on everybody's radar. So we're watching that closely. Of course, one of the grade levels where we saw an influx of kids was the grade level that we had the four teachers in. So it goes. So we'll keep a close eye, and if we need to add a teacher, we'll come back to the committee for review and approval of that.
Holding strong at that 1,500 number for like, three years now.
We were at 4, at our lowest point, we were at like, 1,438. We are at, yeah, the last two years, we've been over 1,500. 1,505, 15, you know, kind of, we've fluctuated between there. But yeah, we're holding very steady over 1,500, which is great.
Yes. Okay.
And Jill has, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I asked Jill to give an update on our English language learner numbers.
So day one of school, we started with 59 English language learners, 31 former English language learners, and we saw really nice progress with our students. 14 of our students met the qualifying score to no longer be Ls and kind of move into that foul, so it was really nice. And we started the year with 22 students that needed to be screened. So as of today, I got the updated numbers. We currently have 67 Ls, so our numbers have increased. The Fals will stay the same, because you can only fail at the end of a year.
Those are the former that fell?
Yes, the former. And then we have nine that are currently in the pipeline to be screened. So in that, that will change. We actually have new students registering every day. But our, our population of English language learners, former English language, it is growing, because remember, even if they're English, after they are former English learners, we have to monitor them and provide support four years after that. So our numbers are growing. We seem to be good right now with the staffing that we have, but there has been some growth.
When we discuss our MCAS results next month, we have some good information to share in that department. So not only are the numbers going, but we're doing, our staff is, is doing some really nice work. So we'll wait to share that, that data with everybody.
Jill, are those numbers pretty much spread throughout pre-K through 12, or are they like...
We have, they're, they're expanding. Like, in, in the past, we had a very few at the high school. They've increased, especially with our 8th graders there. I would say the majority of our students are our younger students, but I would say we have a pretty good...
It's all throughout.
Yeah, it is, because we're having families come in, and they're staying with us. So they're kind of, the numbers are growing as we go.
We have one full-time English language learner teacher at MES, one at the, at the middle school, and then a .6 at the high school.
.6 at the high school, yeah. And the kids we're very happy to have, so our person who's a .6, she used to travel between two buildings, and when the students, her students, found out that she was going to be there, they were very happy that she was just, we're sharing her this year. She was just going to be at the high school, so, yep.
Very good.
Many of you probably know Dr. Periello, our former district physician. He was with the school district for many, 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 many years, many, many years. And we recently just shifted to a new district physician, Dr. Kane, who is already very familiar with a lot of, a lot of our students. Did you want to?
No, he was, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
My pediatrician, yeah.
Yes. He was here for a very long time, and we have shifted to a new practice. Dr. Molly Kane is our new district physician, and she knows a lot of our students already. She's at the Tri River Family Health Center, where a lot of our students go. And so they were very eager to take on the responsibility of being our new district physician. From a financial perspective, it's a very small contract with them. You can see on page, or the second page of the contract, it's a $4,500 stipend. So it's certainly not a lot of dollars by any sense. But they, they do provide a lot of guidance, a lot of support, they take care of our standing orders, they'll do physicals if we need them. Our nurses can consult with them on, you know, really complicated cases or things that they're unclear of, as far as their own practice. So they, you know, and that's outlined in the contract, but we just wanted to make sure the school committee knew that, that we have a new physician, because Dr. Periello was here for a long time. I had the pleasure of having a really lovely conversation with him about us shifting to a different physician, and he was, he was very lighthearted, and said, "I was wondering when that was going to happen." He was great. He was really great to talk with. But we're super grateful for his many, many years of dedication to our students and families, and... and, and are eager and excited to also have a new physician with the consulting with the district. So I wanted to make sure that the school committee was aware of that and saw the contract. We did have the, our legal department go through everything to make sure that there were no issues with that. And there were not, so we are in, in a great place with that, just so everybody's in the loop. And then the last item from my report is a review of a prior job description we had. You may have heard it referred to as an RBT, which is just a registered behavior technician. I believe it was in 2017, the school committee, we were going through and, and looking at all the minutes and finding the initial job description. I think it was in 2017, the school committee initially approved it. The job description's very, was very outdated and so Jill worked on a new job description that is in your packet this evening. Jill, I don't know if you want to talk about the need for this and what it is and what it does?
Sure, so we have, as I know Jason mentioned in another new contract, we have instructional assistants, we have more of our behavioral ABA instructional assistants, and then we have a BCBA, which is a board certified behavior analyst. We don't have that middle, the next piece that's in there, which would be a registered behavior technician. And as you know, over the years, our goal is to keep all of our kiddos here, like we want to educate them here and we've worked really hard to build our own programs so our students have a place to go when their needs are a little bit more significant than some of the programs we have. So this is an updated job description. We tried to make it, you know, clear, streamlined. The other one was very wordy, actually, I think it was just a copy and paste type of description, but this is just, you know, clearer, more streamlined of what this, the person in this position would do. We are continuing to observe and evaluate what's going on in our classrooms right now, but you know, there, looks like there'd be a need to have this kind of next level, like right between the instructional assistant ABAs and our BCBA. So this is kind of the role that would fall in, in between there.
So this is an updated version of what was already on the books from '27?
Do we currently have any, in, any in our staff?
Nope.
Does this be a unit C or a unit A?
It's a non-union position. The 2017 position was approved that way as well.
It was?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, are we actively pursuing someone to fill this role? Or do?
No, we're not like recruiting right now for that. I think the, I think the thought is though, and correct me if I'm wrong Jill, that there might be a need for it at some point. And so if, if we need to do that, we want to make sure it's up to date. There is a, there, we'll talk about personnel in the next section of the agenda, but there is a unfilled special ed position and I think you might be considering that as a, to kind of shift some of those dollars to this.
So in 2017, did we outsource?
No, so in 2017, we were, we ended up deciding to have an additional BCBA come on board. So we had two. And as our programs are growing, we're finding that there needs to be, there's, there is that one, what this, this person is actually certified, you know, in this area, so that's why we're looking to, if we need to bring someone on board to have this updated and in place.
We only have one BCBA right now?
We have, we have one right now. We're still, I actually have some interviews coming up tomorrow for the other positions, so we do planning, still planning on our two, yes.
So BCBA will create the plan.
Yes.
The RBT follows through.
Helps implement, yes, and it's, yes, and it's a, with the certification and the training, it's above what the requirements and responsibilities of our current ABA paraprofessionals, there's different levels, so it would fall in there, but they're still under the supervision in direction of the BCBA.
Correct.
Look at it as we have SLPAs who are under the direct supervision of our SLPs, an RBT would be under the direct supervision of the BCBA.
SLPA is in the contract? I'm, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree, I think we definitely need that person that's following through with the plans. I, I just think that might be a little low for the requirements and what we really like.
So we did look, we did research it.
Okay.
Jess and I did research it to, and compared to not only what's out there like for jobs, but also other districts. So, and this fell in line, this was the range as of right now, yeah.
So you're looking for a motion to approve the.
New job description.
New job description.
Updated.
Updated.
So I'll make a motion to approve updated registered behavior technician job description as presented.
Motion made by Aaron.
Second.
And seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. All right.
concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We'll move on to Joe in the business office.
Our personnel report, unless the superintendent has something to add, that's just all the information of what, where we stand right now with the vacancies and where everybody is. I don't know if you were talking about the.
Yeah, the only other thing I would have is the 2425 staffing plan. So in your packets behind the personnel report, you have a school year 2425 staff plan outline. This has already changed for the better because we have filled a couple of the positions that are on here. What we have left for vacancies is one special education teacher at Millville Elementary, one reading specialist at the middle school, one paraprofessional at the high school, a building sub at the high school, and then we have BCBA interviews coming up. So we just reposted for the special ed position, the reading specialist, the para and the building sub. So believe it or not, we are actually in very good shape. The positions we have, none of them are, they're all important, but they're not like classroom facing, you know, second grade type positions. All of those have been filled. And so what we have done to try to help the community have the information they need, so accurate information is out there for folks at all times. We put this plan that's in your packet on our district webpage. If you click the explore button, you'll see the staff, staffing list right there. So you just go to the BMR SD page, click explore, and you click staff, and this will come right up. This is going to be, I'm not, it's not this exact document. What it is, is at first it's a master list, but you can sort it. So if you want just MES staff, just click the little dropdown and click MES and just the MES staff come up, their names, their emails, the position. We have removed it from all the school specific pages. We did that on purpose because we need one keeper of the data. What we were finding is we would go in to change something, somebody else already changed it. We then thought somebody else would have changed their school's data, they never changed their school's data, so we're like, you know what, we're done with this. We have one keeper of the information and it's on the district page and you can still sort it by school. So if your child's at the middle school and you want just the middle school list, you click explore, staff, and there's a little dropdown, just click the middle school and you get all the middle school people.
That's great.
Yeah, the thing that we can't figure out, and it's a, it's all this crazy backend technology stuff, like the, the program doesn't let us alphabetize it. So for whatever reason, we can't alphabetize, you'll get all the staff, but they're not going to be in alphabetical order.
I was trying to figure out, well, they're by high, by school, I was like, I can't even tell what order these are.
Yeah, we did this by.
But it's by building.
By building.
But not by alphabet, not by.
It's alphabetized by job title.
By department?
Uh, job title. So if you look primary job title, admin assistant, art teacher, see, I know, it's, it's really kind of.
It kind of looks like department.
Yeah.
When you get down to the.
It's a little wacky, and then when you go to our district webpage, it's even wackier because you can't, you can't put like a structure to it. It won't, I don't know why it's, it won't let you do that.
Be grateful that it's there.
But it's all there, yes. And then when we have a change, Stephanie just goes in and changes it. It's all in one place, which is great. So the information will always be up to date and accurate. So if, we also, you know, if, if, I know there was some chatter about, you know, lots of vacancies and all the things. So I would ask our families, if you have any questions, just ask, like we're happy to address, we're happy to address them. But now you can go right to the webpage and see all of the positions, all in one place.
I, I guarantee you that people will comment before going on social media before going to the webpage.
We are always happy to help.
Hopefully someone puts the link to the webpage when they.
I hope you're not counting on me to do that. I will need assistance.
Another community member will.
So we're happy to have this updated and in place and I wanted to make sure the school committee had it in their packets. Joe, back over to you.
All right, thank you. In your packet, you have a memo for me focused around the final grant awards for FY25. As you know, when the budget's created, we base those budget amounts and each grant on the estimate for past experience. Pleased to announce that all of these federal grants that are listed had, did see an increase in their final awards. Title I had the most significant increase of $66,806. The IDA fund, Program 240, had an increase of $4,895. IDA pre-K increased by $1,000. Title II increased by $7,176. And Title IV increased by $801 for a total positive adjustment of $80,678. So with your approval, once we, we can update our ability to expend those funds as we need in the system.
So move.
Aaron made a motion on the, accepting the.
Title of grant awards.
As read by Joe.
Second.
Second by Chuck and Ted. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Very good.
So again, is the expenditure report for this period. I do want to point out some title errors that I have in here. The heading does show 7-1, 2023 to 6-6, 2024. It should be 7-1, 24 to 6-30, 25. I apologize for that error. And also the printed date says 8-13-24. These were actually numbers as of September 3rd. I've made the correction in the template that I use for this going forward, so you shouldn't see that issue again. I have no major concerns about our projections as we move forward. The one format change I did make on this report, and it's more just a structural format so we can really see what our operating surplus or deficit is at the end of the year without the E and D being included. So you'll see the E and D line, use of E and D on the front page under revenue for a budget, but you won't see any projection of use of that E and D in, in the, in the sec, the third to last column to project it to year end. I've moved that down below the line on the final page. So the true projected surplus or deficit is actual revenue, actual expense that we're projecting, and if we were to use into that E and D at the end of the year, what, then an adjusted surplus, what that would look like. Does anybody have any questions on that or questions on the report in general? Overall, the projection hasn't changed much from the previous projection, it probably stayed pretty consistent. Halfway through the year is a good judge on the projection to see where we're really truly going to be.
I like the way it looks now.
What's that?
I like the way it looks now.
I know, well, we're looking for that to. So the next item, if there aren't any questions, is the budget transfer approval. What I'm doing right now in our system is I'm, I'm trying to get the account codes to line up to the DESI requirements, and DESI has requirements for function code and object code, and a lot of the information in the system is not lining up to that requirement, which makes it very difficult to do the year end report, which I'm in the middle of processing right now. So the majority of these journal entries are movement of funds just into the correct code. There's no fiscal impact, there's no increase or decrease. We're just moving from one function code to another function code. Some of them are just movements between locations and object code, so there's no function code issue there. The highlighted items are the ones that had a change in function code to align up to the, what their requirements are. The other issue I'm running into is I, I need to post these corrections as I find them and as I go forward. I know I'm supposed to come to the school committee before making any of these posted journal entries, and it's very easy, if you tell me not to do this, to reverse these. I can do that. But it's, it's helpful if I have the ability moving forward to make these journal entries and then present them to you as I, as I do them every school committee meeting. I can provide the same type of report that gives you the detail on it. I do try to put in the line memo as much detail as I possibly can as to why that movement has taken place. I know it does truncate somewhat, but if there's any further questions, I can always get that information too.
So I'm gonna, then I'll ask for a motion for this committee to consider allowing Joe to change the codes as necessary to meet the DESI requirements pending our approval when it's presented to us at, at, at a, at future school committee meetings as we, as he cleans this up. And then that'll be separate from accepting this, because we do have to take a motion on this budget transfer approval as well, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
So I'll motion to.
First thing I said?
Yeah.
Yeah, to allow Joe to do that? Motion by Carrie?
Second.
Second by Tara. So this again will allow Joe to make these corrections. He'll present with, and then we'll approve them, but he can still move forward at each next school committee meeting. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And then we also, are we at the transfer point yet as well, Joe? You need a motion on the budget transfer or?
Uh, not yet, I think that's following, they have it listed on the facilities report, the gym, are we talking about?
Oh, got, gotcha, gotcha, my, yeah. The next thing on your agenda, but that was the expenditure report.
Yeah. So then the budget transfer, that, that is the sheet that I just went through with you that I did, that was what you, you approved my ability to make that change. Do we need to approve these actual budget transfers also? The highlighted sheet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I, that was, that was what I was getting at.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers as shown on the list.
Motion made by Carrie?
Second.
Seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you. The next item is the district lighting projects. Happy to say that the phase one of this middle school LED upgrades is done. We, I'm just waiting, I've signed off some paperwork to allow them to input the entire cost of that, of the project on the National Grid bill so our credits can absorb that cost. I did request from Energy Conservation Inc., his name is Chris, to perform a further check in the district of what other lighting we could benefit from, the incentives that are out there. These incentives that are available right now expire December 31st of this year, so if we are going to utilize them, all work has to be completed by that time. He did find three areas that we could still use these incentives on. It'd be Phase Two, obviously, of the middle school, up the, the rest of this building. Middle school exterior lighting can be upgraded and Millville Elementary School's second floor, that was never done. I believe the first floor was, and Scott, correct me if I say anything out of turn, the first floor was done in previous years, but the second floor needs to be done still. He did present to me three proposals for that, and on page two of the memo that I provided you, it is an outline of all the projects, Phase One and Two of the middle school, the exterior lighting and the Millville Elementary. And what I also included was the total amount of credits that we have available throughout the district on all our invoices. As of August 31st, 2024, we had a credit balance of $425,763.09 available. And what's interesting with that is, I don't know if you recall, but we were paying Hudson Electric separately and National Grid was just paying for the, the delivery fees. That's now part of the bill, so the, the credits that we're receiving now is paying the electric to Hudson, Hudson Electric and to National Grid. And even, and that August was the first billing with that on there. Even with that billing, we saw over $55,000 increase to our credits. So the credits are still generating. I'm sure we'll have months where it goes high and low depending on how much sun we have. have, right? Because we're purchasing that power. So what I did is I gave you the total cost of each project, the incentive we'll receive from the government to complete the project, and then our cost, and each of the, and how the credit will be applied to each to give us a remaining balance at the end of the year. So the Phase I project cost $255,276. Our cost was $115,978.13. One thing I like to point out, that was under a different incentive program, so we got a little bit more than 50% at that point in time. The new program that the government has in place now is a 50-50 split. So, and we had the $425,000 in credits giving us a remaining balance of just under $310,000 of credits available. Phase II is going to cost $206,308. We will be responsible for 50%, which is just over $103,000. We utilize our credits, gives us a remaining balance of $206,000 credits. Exterior lighting, total cost of $65,288. Half to us is $32,644. Use the remaining credits. We have a balance of $173,986.96 in credits to continue to use. And then the Millville Elementary lighting, $102,621. Our responsibility is $51,310.50. We utilize those credits. We'd still, assuming no other credits are added as we move forward, which we anticipate will be, we'd still have a balance of $122,676.46 in credits. So we have plenty of credits to fully fund all these lighting upgrades. You know, and the key is, we need to start these projects right away to get them done before December 31st. I was talking to Scott, I think the biggest hurdle will be the timing of doing this work because it's schools in session. They did say that they have two crews, and this crew could work the second shift, I think it's three to 10, is that what it is, Scott?
Two to 10.
Two to 10. They would work the shift that the custodians here, make sure they clean up. It's got to be spotless for when the kids come in. And it should only take a couple of weeks. The exterior lighting, we can arrange the parking in the parking lot for them to work whenever they need to to get that done. They can do that all day. Same thing with Millville Elementary's second floor. It's only the administrators that are in there. They can get that, bang that out all day too. There's no restrictions there. So I think what we're requesting right now is the same thing we requested on Phase I, approval either of myself or the superintendent to sign the agreement for each of these projects so we can get them moving and started.
The only challenge with the outdoor lighting would be the wall sconces on the building. They'd be working right outside the classrooms, so we'll have to schedule a better time for that.
Oh, they're working out of classrooms? Is that what you said?
They'll be right outside of the classrooms.
Oh, yeah.
On the exterior of the building. Yeah.
Cameras outside the window.
No. After 2:30.
Well, they'll have to do that probably at that second shift time slot.
Yeah. Days are getting shorter though.
If you're a lighting company, you can bring lights.
Yeah, they'll bring lights, they'll figure it out. That's their problem to resolve.
Are there any questions or anything I can clear up on that?
The Millville School, I told them they could do during a normal shift because it'll be on the second floor.
Sure.
So I'll entertain a motion to allow the superintendent, as well as Joe, to enter into contract with Phase II for, that's for Hotness School, exterior lighting at the Hotness School and the Millville Elementary School lighting.
Second.
Motion made by Carrie, seconded by Aaron. Any other discussion? And so this will leave us with $122,000 worth of credits going into, because a lot of this has to be done by December.
That's right.
That's right.
And then whatever credits we get between, you know, September, October, November, you know, I think we're going to still see our credits increasing.
But the, like, we're losing the longer we go on the, not the reimbursement, but the, like, the, as you explained to us earlier, that we were getting more for less.
Formula for reimbursement.
The formula, yeah.
Oh, 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 yeah.
So.
Yes.
All right. Okay, so no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Thank you, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Facilities update. Mr. Facilities Manager.
So at BMR, I'm going to lead off with the gym floor, but Joe's got more to follow up with on that. The work started last Saturday. It took Saturday, Sunday, Monday to complete the demolition of that area of the gym floor. Serp Pro came back today, got their dehumidifiers, picked up all their equipment. O'Keefe Flooring is scheduled to start on Saturday. They'll be getting a delivery of wood products tomorrow. So he wants to start on Saturday, probably work Saturday, Sunday, but it's still going to take a good week to get that floor down. Then he's going to have to sand the whole entire floor and re-urethane it and repaint the lines. On the stage, there's been no leaking since that incident that we had. The boiler repairs were made. I submitted the paperwork to the state fire marshal yesterday, so we'll be getting the certificates in the mail. The high school kitchen, they got their new steamer and kettle installed and up and running. Kitchen staff is very happy. Over at the middle school, we're still waiting on the pressure gauges for the sprinkler system. And we've had complaints of hot water coming in through the cold water, particularly in the bathrooms, when students are washing their hands, the water's really hot. We did find that the mixing valves are jammed. We can't adjust the hot and cold water temperatures. So I priced out kits to rebuild those, something I'll take on myself once we get the kits. Outdoor basketball hoops have been installed. I'm going to paint some lines to simulate a small court and possibly some other games in the parking lot area as well, like hopscotch and such. Jenny's supposed to take a survey and see what the kids would like to have out there. We did get the Gaga ball pit, and that's, hasn't been used yet, but it's easy enough to put together, it just slides together and they can move it around. We have that. JFK, there were a few cracks in the sidewalk on the Menon Street side. I did pick up cement and patch those last week. Came out really good. It was a tripping hazard. During a recent fire drill, they found that some of the interior doors are not releasing the magnets when the fire alarm goes off. Doors will automatically close. I'm going to have precision alarm address that the next time they come in for their quarterly inspection of the fire system. Probably be PD Day, November 1st, I believe. I'll schedule that. And Millville Elementary School, the fire pump was inspected last Wednesday and passed with no, no issues. And that is all I got.
Just as a follow-up on the gym floor. Maya did respond and give us an estimated cost to do the repairs of the floor between $50,000 and $60,000. Our responsibility in the deductible is $10,000. So I was looking at how we could fund that $10,000, it's not budgeted. We do have a miscellaneous revolving fund with a pretty good fund balance in it. I'd like to get an approval to allow me to cover that deductible not to exceed $10,000 out of that miscellaneous revolving fund. It shouldn't have any impact on any other plans that we have with the use of money.
So?
I move to approve the use of funds for the miscellaneous revolving fund in an amount not to exceed $10,000 for the repairs needed for the BMR HS gym floor.
Second.
Motion made by Ted, seconded by Tara. And any, do you say they're starting Saturday?
To install the new floor, yes.
Thirty-seven.
The old floor was already demolished.
That's great. Excellent.
Unbelievable how much moisture was still trapped under that floor. It's been a good month since we had that training prepared.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ayes have it. Okay, thank you, Scott. Use of, Phil, sorry, use of facilities.
Just an update, and then Scott, you may want to stick around in case there are any questions on any of the facilities requests, but the request at the last meeting for the track, we reached out and asked a lot of clarifying questions and never heard back from anybody. We reached out again, gave them another opportunity, and email, phone calls, never heard back from anybody. So we just sent them a letter saying their request was denied. Just an update on that, I don't have any new information for you. The Armenian Youth Federation will not be using them.
I'm sorry about that. Thank you for that update. Very informative.
You're very welcome.
New requests. We have, where we have BMR football, we have a few here.
Oh, that was, the BMR football boosters needed the, this one didn't need to be in there. Yeah, we already did, we did the, it was like an, they called it an open practice.
Yeah.
I went, it was actually great, it was great to see the kids out in the field. It was a Sat, last, not last Saturday, the Saturday before, Labor Day weekend, Saturday. They did a little, a little quick out after, but it was nice to see the kids out there.
That's this one. Oh, BMR, yeah, that's us.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that one didn't need to be in there.
Okay. And then we have express football in share picture day.
Yes, that is Saturday.
Blackstone Millville Youth Baseball League, travel baseball tryouts.
Basketball.
I'm sorry, yeah, I should put my glasses back on. Yep. We also have Blackstone Millville Girl Scout Troop 872, sorry, 782. Girl Scout Troop 632 for school meeting, for troop meetings, September 25th, 6 to 7 PM. Is that just one time? One time?
Scott, is that one time? Just the one meeting?
Which one?
632.
No, it's for the year.
Looks like they have September to do.
They have it, September through June.
Oh, yeah, the 25th through June, it should say 2025.
Oh, on Wednesdays, okay. Six to, so it's every Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. I just got to learn how to read them.
Wednesdays, 6 to 7, starting September 25th.
And dance creations. With a list of times, dates, and fees. And these have all been vetted and...
Creations on the new, those are fees.
Okay.
Okay.
Says they're asking for the lift, that's included in the custodian piece, I assume?
This one asking for a lift?
Yeah, on the front page at the bottom.
Here.
What'd you say, asking for? Oh, the lift.
That'll be okay, Scott?
Yeah. We operate the lift, we don't allow them to...
That's what, yeah, and that's why it's covered, custodian, I guess. I'll make a motion to approve, all as requested?
Motion made by Tara?
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. Any other discussion regarding these facilities requests? Care and none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous, all approved. There's a lot of requests, huh? What a, one shot. Okay, well, that wraps up the facilities report. School committee forum. Does anyone from the school committee like to add anything for this evening?
Just a question about the other piece that's in here with the use of facilities. It's our policies dated 2008 and 2009. Are we doing something with these? Do we need to...
Those are included if there was a question from the fee waiver piece. So we just, we put the policy, full policy in.
But we, didn't we, what did we do last week?
Updated the fees. Yeah, so those are the right fees.
This is new, okay. This is updated.
Yes.
So the date should be updated, probably.
Up, yeah, it says adopted February 12th, 2009. We could just say updated.
Yep.
We need to make a motion to, it's a policy.
We approved it at our last meeting, right?
We did, yeah. So maybe just notate that it's updated August of 2024.
Yep.
I don't know, I feel like if I had this in front of me that night, we would have maybe even went higher from 2009. That's a long time.
We'll change the date on it based on what the school committee voted.
Even page one says revised, a January 2008 date, so maybe both need, wherever needed, update the date.
Got it.
Should we go back to the Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
Well...
It's just, it says fee waiver, so do we...
Well, okay, so these are all approved. I wasn't, I can explain my understanding of what the Parks and Recs, what Celeste had told me. I don't know if she didn't know there was a meeting tonight, but, but it doesn't say it on their application, but the Parks and Recs were, made a request, which is probably way at the beginning of my agenda, right?
I have it right there.
Oh, good. I, this is like the, I think it's the Fall Festival, yeah. And what Celeste had told me, and I don't want to misspeak, but they were looking for this, for this as a backup if it didn't rain. And it was going to be held at Roosevelt if the weather was good. But I don't, that's another, that led to another question, like, we didn't know that. And it's not on the, it's not on the application that I could see. So like, if we were to have a situation where we needed a custodian, you can't use a, call a custodian at 8 o'clock in the morning and saying, hey, it's raining, so we need you. So it either has to be, you know...
You're doing it or you're not, kind of, is that what you're...
You're either doing it, yeah, I mean...
Or they're getting paid, or they're not, if we approve it, the custodian, they are paying for the custodian.
But it's unfair to say, I mean, to expect a custodian to be ready if it rains on a Saturday morning as well.
Is that what the total amount there would cover?
It was $352.
That would just be the custodian fee?
Yes, and that's all it was.
And the reason the policies in your packet was just to show, there is a section that states about, you know, regardless of your group, if it's a certain time when there's not somebody in the building, like in this case, I think it was a Saturday or something.
Right, yeah.
We have to pay to have a custodian there.
Or if they're done early, the custodian's still getting paid for that.
That's right.
Twenty, it says 24 hours they can cancel?
Yeah, and I think, and I think it was, I think it mentions custodial and maybe kitchen staff or something, and somewhere in the language, which they didn't need, but they needed the custodian to have the building open.
And then...
The request was to have the fee waived, and I said that she could, certainly would have an opportunity to ask and speak to the committee, and she said she'd like to be on the agenda.
Right.
And I gave her the date and time of the meeting.
So we're not going back to it?
We're not charging a use, a fee for the facility, we're just charging for the custodian.
Just the cost, yeah.
But it sounds like we're at a point where we need to know if they're using our facility or not, because we're going to schedule that custodian. That's in the, before our next meeting.
Yeah, that's what I, and she had, and I'm sure if I'm misspeaking, I'll hear within the next hour, you know, so, but she had led me to believe that it was on the application that this was like a secondary locate, but it's not. It's, you know, it, we normally sell food at the snack bar, but we're not sure if we will do that if we move inside, but it, she doesn't say that they'll move inside here. It was, she told, the event is at Roosevelt. If they have to move inside, they were planning on using here. That's my understanding of, that's my interpretation of what she had told me, so...
And she had requested to me to have... And she had requested to me to have the custodial fee waived. And I said to her, I don't have the, I don't have the authority to do that. If any fees, the school committee decides that.
We would waive the facilities for groups that have children, but the custodian fee is...
Yeah, this was just for that.
Do we want to approve it? Because this will be before our next meeting?
Since we approved it.
You already approved it, yes.
I don't need anything else.
They wanted the fee, they wanted the custodial fee waived.
So as long as they cancel...
The school department, the school district has to pay it. Somebody has to pay the custodian.
So as long as they cancel the day before, they wouldn't have to pay it if they watch the weather? It says 24 hours.
So we need to make sure they know that.
I'll let her know. Either cancel or pay up. But we're not running a soup kitchen here.
Oh, that does say pay for us. It does say paid in full prior, and we will refund if they cancel at least 24 hours in advance.
Okay.
All right, so no action on that?
Yep.
That's good. School committee forum. Everybody good? Chuck, yeah?
Nothing to share.
Okay. All right, our next meeting is on October 10th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. Until that time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ted, seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion meeting adjourned.